Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. After that, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. That will be led by Alderman at Large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you and thank you for the men and women here, Lord, who serve our city, Lord, who go out and do their best each and every day, Lord. I pray blessings upon them, each and every one, Lord. Pray for our citizens, Lord Jesus. And, uh, Lord, we just want to say thank you for all that you do for us. We love you so much. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the January third, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Can I move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the North Central Mississippi Regional Railroad Authority Easement Agreement. Mr. Nick Manley, City Attorney.
This agreement with the North Mississippi Regional Railroad Authority is part of the Phase Three Fire Extension Project. This agreement will authorize the city to bore underneath for the fire, or for the water lines that were under the railroad. A couple of changes are made to the agreement, which were agreed to by North Central Mississippi Railroad Authority. And then the cost for one-time entry fee of fifty-five hundred dollars, then a one-time contract fee of twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And then the city will pay six hundred dollars per year for the easement to the railroad because it's an easement slash permit license. So tonight, I just need authorization for the mayor to sign this agreement with the North Mississippi Regional Railroad Authority.
Can I move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution adopting uniform guidance received under the American Rescue Plan.
As we've discussed before, the city received seven point six, roughly seven point six million dollars for the American Rescue Plan. Since the funds are below ten million, we've already passed a resolution to let us use it for, or let the city use it for those items that are government-related. This resolution tonight, along with the guidance, will set forth the restrictions, along with requirements for use of the funds that would mirror the federal, Code of Federal Regulations. So it will provide the guidance on the procurement, along with the contracting for those funds, or in compliance with the federal law on use of those funds. So tonight, we need authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution adopting those guidance under the American Rescue Plan.
Can I move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an MOU with Mississippi Transportation Commission.
Yeah, this MOU with the M dot Mississippi Transportation Commission, it sets forth requirements for maintaining and placing equipment that the SPD uses to monitor and help with the law enforcement. So the MOU will set forth the requirements that we have to provide the, any drawings or plans to the commission for their review, along with the requirements and procedures of maintaining that equipment. It's on the M dot right-of-ways and M dot poles. So tonight, we need authorization for either the mayor or chief of moor to sign this agreement with the Mississippi Transportation Commission as provided. It's their standard document and so it will be the standard form they use, but we still have it approved when we want to use their equipment and/or right-of-ways for our equipment for the South Haven Police Department.
Can I move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an agreement with the Wildcat Cheer Organization.
Yeah, this agreement is for Spring Fest, authorize the city to contract with Wildcat Cheer, which we've done for numerous years to help with serving beverages and vending hospitality at the, at Spring Fest. The agreement sets forth the pricing, along with the requirements of Wildcat Cheer. So we need authorization for the mayor to sign this agreement with Wildcat Cheer for Spring Fest twenty twenty-three.
Can I move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jerome, second by Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for South Haven Police Department's surplus property.
Yeah, this resolution will just surplus a police vehicle in accordance with seventeen twenty-five twenty-five. It's no longer needed by the police department, so the police department can do with the vehicle as it sees fit, since it has no value based on the condition of the vehicle.
Can I move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is South Haven Fire Department bid acceptance for uniforms.
Yeah, the Fire Department recently went to bid for uniforms, received only one bid, and it was from Mid-South Solutions. And the bid, as itemized, for each individual piece of clothing or equipment, would be four thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars. So that being the only bid, along with the fact that the department spends around fifty-eight thousand annually on uniforms. Tonight, we would want to author, or it's been requested by the Fire Department to authorize a contract and/or any documents need to be signed or approved for the bid acceptance and award to Mid-South Solutions by the Fire Chief, Mr. Scoggins.
I make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Kelly, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is authorization to seek requests for proposals for our sanitation and recycling services.
Yeah, currently, the city is under contract with Waste Connections for recycling and rubbish and garbage pickup. Waste Connections has sent a letter to the city requesting not to, or says it will not honor its final year of the contract, which would begin May one through April thirtieth of next year. That would be the final year of the contract. So therefore, at this juncture, their request is to go to RFP for those services, which is required by thirty-one seven thirteen. The intent is to obviously get proposals, and it has to be advertised, as we would advertise a construction bid. So get the proposals. Once the proposals come in, if there's any questions or further information the board would like, the board can interview candidates, as we've done in the past, request that information. And also, since the time we went, last went to bid, we can now go up to a ten-year contract. So the RFP will allow for a six-year contract, along with four one-year extensions, if awarded by the board. If the board chooses to do that as part of the contract. So tonight, the only request is to go to bid or seek proposals for the services, get those proposals in, let Robert Booth and Public Works review those, and then, once we have some more information with those proposals, come back to the board with, and obviously get, have the mayor make recommendations on how he wants to proceed. But then have the mayor and board decide how best to proceed with regarding interviews, more information, negotiations, however, based on what the proposals are. So all that to say, tonight, we see authorization to seek those proposals, and then in February one through end, we'll come back to the board for, with more information.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Kelly. To update everyone, y'all know how important these services are. You know, it's one of the heaviest call volume, you know, from citizens about, you know, this service. So we certainly want to make sure that whichever company has this contract, that they want to have it. You know, we don't, we don't want to, you know, be talking to somebody about customer service standards, and they're telling you on the front end they don't want the job, you know. So I think that it's, it is, the timing is right for us to, you know, to bid again and to find somebody who's, you know, who's hungry and wants this job. And that way, it's going to give the best result and best service to our citizens. So that's why we're here. You know, we have been pleased with the service that Waste Connections has given us for the most part. But as y'all know, this is a challenging business. Even the people that are in this business will tell you that, you know, they have, I mean, they, they have challenges, you know, with pickups and misses and, you know, with their own, you know, employees, because so many different hands, you know, are touching this work throughout a city the size of South Haven. So anyway, I just feel like it is time now for us to, since they sent this letter and basically, you know, expressed that they don't want to carry on like this, I think it's time to bid, so.
Mayor, has Waste Connection expressed interest in, to you or anyone about renegotiating that last year? I mean, was that, was that an issue or?
No, that's not the, the way the letter was sent. I mean, obviously, that's it. We, we did talk about, you know, us having that in there. But again, if they tell you they don't want the, they don't want the job.
Real quick, Alderman Payne, you, um, once you award the contract for sanitation services, the only thing you can do is raise it through a CPI or whatever your original contract is. So we had, there is a, an increase in there for fuel and CPI, so that, that's all we can't.
So that alone wasn't the issue?
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't know.
And it's just for another year. It's for one, the, the extension is just for one year.
And we don't have the, legally, once you award it, you don't have the authority to go back and renegotiate certain aspects. I mean, you have to go by what's in that contract.
Sure.
But you, on the front end, you can negotiate with the proposals that come in. So you, when the proposals come in, you have the authority to negotiate with one, multiple different proposals under sanitation, for sanitation proposals.
But they didn't give us any rea, any reasons? It's just?
None that I know of. I, I, Robert Booth received the letter. I did not receive the letter. So I, but the, I've read the letter, and the letter was not, did not elaborate whatsoever on any of the reasons, other than very matter of fact.
Is there a possibility we need to look at separating the cart pickup from the rubbish pickup?
You can do that.
Any kind of, you know, any advantage to that?
Well, that is an option, RFP to bid one without the other. In the past, that was done. But over the last two cycles of re, of proposals, it's been more efficient to have it with one. But that is a possibility under the, under the proposals.
I, I, I know the rubbish is, it's not a moneymaker for them. I know the cart, because it's all automated.
Yeah.
The truck, you know, comes up with the arm, picks up. The, the rubbish is more time-intensive.
Yeah. Well, but then again, for the Bennett, for the city of South Haven negotiating the best service.
Sure.
You, you have to take the good with the bad.
Sure.
You know, so we, we certainly don't want the lucrative part of the contract to be in one person's, one company's hands, and then make it more difficult for us to find somebody that does the other. But yeah, I, there's no reason, Nick, when we craft it, before we bid it, we can look at it different ways to see which gets us the best result.
Yes, sir. And then, once you get the proposals in, you can look at it then as well. It's, it's, you have authority to negotiate for these sanitation proposals once they, once they're received. So you can look at different aspects and different methods on how you want to do it.
And then I ask the same questions that Alderman, that you just asked Alderman Hoots, and we don't know all the answers to that. But, um, but they pretty much showed their cards when they tell you they don't want to continue.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that, and do you want to force, you know, we have other options. It's a, it's a, it's an expensive contract. And do we really want someone to have it that doesn't want it, you know? And so I think it's, that's why I say I think it's time.
It's a good thing we own armed carts, so.
The garbage carts, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a needed change order for the bank plus amphitheater project.
Yeah, this change order being recommended by the Parks Department, along with, I mean, for the amphitheater. It's associated with some of the requirements needed that, from the Fire Department, that have had to be done, along with some cleanup that was not anticipated before construction on the post end, I mean, on the, on the back end of the public construction. So tonight, authorization for the mayor to sign the change order resolution, along with the change order itself, with Murphy and Sons, an amount of thirty-two thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents.
We need, now, we do need to add, add the pressure washing back in.
Yeah, pressure washing back, we'll take it out. So the change order would be not to exceed, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. And, uh, once you add the pressure washing back in, along with the improvements that are required by the Fire Department as well.
We did look at the pressure washing. That's for the existing bowl that's there, you know, it's aged. So, you know, with all the new equipment, we want to freshen that up, you know, so it looks new again. And so that was such a significant cost that we actually got other quotes to pull it out of there, to get other quotes, to see if we could save the taxpayers money. And the other quote was, was higher than this one. So this is with Murphy and Sons, who's already on site, on the job. So since we got the other quote that was higher, we recommend putting that back in and just letting Murphy and Sons do it while they're out there. It'll be the most, the, the least intrusive project if they do it while they're there. And then some of the other stuff, you, y'all can see what's all on there. But other things that, that we didn't expect, most of it is like stuff that would be maintenance. It's not really tied to the project itself, but with some of the new changes, you know, we had to make adjustments with fencing, and then the fire hydrant and the ballards around the fire hydrant to protect it. So these are just things that have come up, you know, that we did not anticipate. We had some money left in the budget. There was an, an underage, but that has actually turned out not to go in our favor. But anyway, financially, we'll sit down and look at the whole thing for whatever's not in the bond. You know, we'll pick that up with maintenance or another budget line. But these are all things that my goal, we're having a meeting tomorrow to talk about the dated, da, daily operations on a concert day, to go ahead and answer all the questions, but my goal is to be game-ready after tomorrow. Even though we won't have one, I want to be ready to have a concert. I want all the questions to be answered for all of our team, with our city, so everybody knows what their role is and what it's going to be like. And a part of that is, you know, getting these things wrapped up. So recommend, I recommend that you approve this, please.
I make that motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, the second by Alderman Payne. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoot?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Uh, next on agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook.
Uh, yes, sir. Tonight, I'm here just to kind of give you a summary on a, an a zoning ordinance amendment I'm putting forth for proposal. I've discussed it with Nick and the mayor. As part of my job, I look at trends that I see with different uses and different areas to, that just seem to be of concern for development. You've seen me come up here concerning gas stations, retail strips, car washes. We try to limit it and, and look at it on a case-by-case basis to see if there's a need for it in the area where it wants to go, and not just permit things by right. Well, a couple of board meetings ago, we did have a deep discussion about a hotel, going over by Snowden. One of the main discussion points was the SRT chain scales, quality of the hotel, is it needed in that area? Are we saturating the market? And I've been steadily looking at the number of hotels that have been proposed over the years, how many already have on the ground. And I discussed it with the mayor, that I think it's time we look into just putting some more regulatory controls there. And to do that, I first came up with a list of what we already actually have out there. I have twenty hotels on the ground that are in use as of now. We have six that are in the pipelines under construction. We have two that are proposed that have not submitted into actual construction phase. And we've got six coming up proposing to be rezoned for hotel sites. So as you can see, there's, there's over thirty right now just waiting to come in. It's a great problem to have, but at the same time, what you don't want to do is oversaturate a market, and you don't want to create blight in some areas because they're migrating to other areas. So the proposal I have up for discussion tonight and not for a vote, just for discussion, is to take all of the permitted by right areas where hotels can go and put them into conditional use, very similar to what we did with the last project that came in front of us. It will require that they identify their SRT chain scale, so we'll know that they're vetted, and they have had their, their financials looked at, and, and they've been vetted by a big chain. But also, in talking to a bunch of the hoteliers around here, they look at market studies very closely. So we also recommend that a feasibility market study by a nationally recognized group be submitted to us for review. And I'm not talking about for the Memphis metro area, because a lot of people will utilize that. I'm not even talking about for DeSoto County. We want to know our, our market, the South Haven market, that what you're proposing, where you're proposing it, there is a demand, and the due diligence has been done in the market study to show the Board of Aldermen that it's needed. And finally, what we have also found is many of the hoteliers around here are getting locations and then sitting on them for an excessive amount of time. So I also propose to put a two-year conditional use permit on it, and that's the same as you would have for a building permit. So if we see no movement on the ground, then you're required to come back to this board and resubmit, just as a new project. Like I said, it's not saying they're not going to be allowed, and, and every one of them may come in and, and have the, you know, the judgment in favor. But it just lets us kind of look at it on a case-by-case basis and make the determination for the location it comes in, and to see that there's, there's need for it there, and that we're not causing a negative effect to what we already have on the ground. So I'm just here tonight for any questions you may have, or any concerns, or any revisions that we need to put in play before we actually come to the board and ask for approval of it.
What do you do? We, we just want them to be on the SRT scale. It doesn't matter whether it's like, what, one through five?
Yeah, there's five classifications.
Yeah.
I'm not going to mandate it. That's going to be something that, that will come to the board. And if they come in with an economy hotel, then they're going to have to defend the need of it to this board right here for a decision.
And it's two years, once they?
The second they step out of here with their conditional use permit, they have two years from that date.
Because I, I know we have that one still beside Bad News to Soto that.
Yes, that's a fun one right now.
Oh, my gosh.
We are, we're working through a lot of things with them. That's a contractor issue, but essentially, you know, that's the problem. What we don't want to see is going down the interstate in one of our most visible areas, have a half-built hotel sitting there rotting away. So no, we want to put that, you know, we want to put that control in there, so.
I like the two, uh, two-year.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll just add, I appreciate the proposal that Whitney has. Don't have to explain hotels. I mean, if you go into, you know, bigger cities that have blight and, and, and have resulting crime from, you know, from the, you know, second and third or, or subsequent owners of a hotel, you know, the quality of it goes down. And we're in a situation in South Haven where we're blessed that we have a strong economy and, and people want to be here. People want to do business here. We have a great market, but we're in a situation where we need to slow it down a little bit because we can get, we can get overdone in this area, and then these are problems that you spend decades trying to correct. I mean, if you get overbuilt in this, then it's, it's going to take, again, decades to correct the problem.
Right.
So it's something that we definitely need to be proactive about right now, before it's overbuilt and over-saturated. And I, I love the idea of, you know, having the conditional use. That way, you know, this board gets to make the decision. That way, you know, this board gets to make the decisions because, you know, as y'all, I don't have to tell you, you know, everything, every development that comes in here, you know, the citizens expect, you know, that you made a good decision with that and that I made a, a good, you know, abocation for, you know, for what's, comes in here too. So, um, anyway, we've seen this with other things. As Whitney stated, uh, sometimes you just, uh, you get overbuilt. It just needs a little bit of, a little more regulatory control. So, I definitely think the hotels, uh, need to be slowed down, so. What else was in there? Um, so, the SRT and then the market study you mentioned.
Mm-hmm, and then you'll have a two-year time limit on it.
Yeah.
Uh, we already have a footnote thirty-seven which identifies that hotels have to have a minimum of three amenities and three or more stories, all internal access to the, to, to the rooms. So, we're not, we're not eliminating that. We're saying in addition to this, these are now the other things you will have to meet. Um, right now, it's permitted by right as long as you meet that criteria with the three amenities. They, they're permitted by right. They come in, they go through site plan, design, review, lands here at Board of Aldermen. But there's no further control. It's just what it looks like. So, this just gives us the allowance to look at and say, one, is this quality of hotel necessary here? Is it needed here? Can we look at everything else in our market? Is this one we're missing? And it also says, you know, we got thirty-two on the ground, we need number thirty-three. Prove it to us that we need number thirty-three.
And it, it also ties into, you know, to your zoning, like, you know, for most things, not all things, obviously, but for most things, there's a place for it. Uh, but if you don't have zoning and controls, you know, you always have, uh, certain businesses that want to put something that's not in the best location for the future of the city. Like, it's good for their pocketbook and you can't blame them for wanting to do it, but it's important that we, that we have these controls in place because there's a right, a right place for, you know, for certain types of hotels. So, that, that was just discussion?
Just discussion.
And then you'll craft it and have Nick will draw it up, right?
I think Nick's already got it in resolution form and I think he actually sent it out, um, not for adoption or vote tonight, just for discussion. And if there's anything we need to tweak, um, obviously, we want that feedback tonight.
Yeah.
And that there'll be a hearing at the next week since the planning changed and that's what the vote will be.
Yeah, are there any other, any other ideas, anything else that, any other input that, uh, any of y'all would like to see in?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I like it.
And I think you hit it, I mean, the controls that you have in there, I think that touches the main challenges.
I think it covers, it, it covers us at this point. I mean, if we see after, you know, but I've done a lot of, um, review with a lot of people that have hotels in this market and, I mean, they're very forthcoming with information, so I've reached out to a lot of them to get this. This is not something I just came up with myself. I used a lot of information from them and they have the same concerns we do because a lot of them are local people that are here, living here as well. So, uh, they have the same concerns as a citizen that we would have, so.
And Whitney and I, since we had the, the long detailed discussion about the hotel, uh, a few meetings ago, uh, we've been contacted by other hoteliers, you know, again, just, you know, want, wanting fairness, you know. So, it's important that we have a plan that's fair to everybody, that, that lays it out there. And, and that's what, you know, Whitney and I have this discussion. We want to be fair, you know, we want to be fair with all the prospective businesses that want to come. And so, this, um, just further enables us to, you know, to lay the rules out fair for everybody. Okay, any other discussion or input?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the, um, mayor's report. Just a couple of things, uh, one, one positive and one negative. How about that? Do the positive first. So, the positive is our, uh, in our parks enhancement plan, y'all know that we had all the work last year to get our tourism, uh, tax, our funding extended for another four years. Uh, then we, uh, we established a plan for that. Uh, one of the big components of that plan was a, a major investment into neighborhood parks. And so, um, since we did that, uh, that is, has been in a design phase. And so, there's a design, it's like eight or nine parks, uh, neighborhood parks that are going to have new walking trails, new pavilions. And so, it took some time to design all of that. Um, and the good news is that's ready. And, uh, at the next meeting, we should be ready to request your authorization to bid for that. So, that's, that's a good update. Um, the bad update, um, so, y'all may already know this, but there was a lot of discussion last week at the, uh, MML conference in Jackson. Uh, MML is highly concerned about this, uh, as they should be. I'm highly concerned about it and I just want to make sure that everyone here understands the ramifications of what has happened. Uh, but the PERS board for all state employees, uh, they have, uh, made a decision to, uh, pass on a five percent increase to all, uh, local municipalities, uh, for employer matching. Um, just to put that in perspective for everybody in the room, uh, that's, in the city of South Haven, that's equivalent to about one point four million dollars.
There we go.
And so, that's an increase on top of what we're already doing. Uh, so, I, I don't know and in all fairness, I've not had the opportunity yet, uh, to speak, uh, with some of the PERS board members. I don't know if I'll get that opportunity, uh, but I want to make sure that, that on behalf of the cities of Mississippi, with South Haven being the third largest city, that I explain what that means and, and the, the real-life implications of just passing on an increase like that to us. Um, you know, without us having any input, you know, in the, you know, the actuarial, uh, part of what they're doing, uh, but, but to just keep passing that cost on to the cities, they need to understand what, what that, what that means. And, and y'all know what a one point four million dollar increase to your budget. Y'all know what that means. And just to put it in, uh, comparison, that's fourteen policemen. And so, y'all know that we're in, in an aggressive mode to hire more police in this city. And, you know, it just like, you know, we start making some progress and then we get stuff like this. It just continues to, you know, hurt the cities. And, you know, that's, um, it's a, it's a big deal. And it's just a, it's a very bad thing. And again, like I said, I've not had the opportunity to have some one-on-one discussions, but the reason I'm bringing it up tonight is to inform y'all of the challenge that will be effective at the next budget year. Uh, and then also for your help and everyone in the audience that may be watching so that they're informed about this. And, uh, so then when they have the opportunity, you know, to speak to the decision-makers with PERS, that they'll relay the impact that that has on the cities. And so, anyway, that's just the report. It's not good, uh, but I felt like everyone, you want to make sure everybody understands, you know, that that's.
Mayor, were they going to pass all that along at the same time or are they going to ease us into it? I mean, is it?
Uh, no, five percent is effective in twenty-three, right, Nick?
My understanding is.
Twenty, what was the date on it? Um, it's twenty-three, but it'd be for our next budget year.
October first.
October first, so, yeah.
So, PERS didn't make any kind of increase on the employees into their own, that the employees make into their own investment? The, the increases on, uh, the govern, governing agency, I guess, that employees across the state?
Um, I wasn't in all the discussions about everything, but it's my understanding that, that when they're reviewing, you know, solvency concerns, that they're passing this on to the, to the employers.
Aren't they trying to do something with the sales tax rebate or something like that, trying to get?
There's been a, um, uh, uh, in the legislature, there's been a recommendation that the sales tax diversion be increased from eighteen and a half to twenty, uh, to help the cities offset this. Um, I did hear from a few officials that they did not give a lot of hope to that happening, but, uh, but I thought that was a good idea. If they're going to keep, you know, passing the burden on to us and they should let us, um, you know, uh, they should divert more of the sales tax revenue that's generated in our cities back to the cities. So, uh, that would be a, if that happened, that would be a great, uh, solution. But anyway, just wanted to update on that. Is there any other discussion about that or any, any thoughts?
To give any reason for the increase?
Solvency.
So, they're, they're mismanagement.
You said it.
I did. I'll say it loudly.
Yeah. And, you know, there's, um, again, I'm not going to get into all the details because, you know, frankly, I've not, you know, been in those discussions, but all I know is that there's some benefits. And we've all seen this with other retirement plans in the history of our country, both locally and nationally. You know, there have been, uh, retirement plans that, uh, are not set up in a, in a prudent financial way and they can't sustain themselves. And so, it makes you wonder, you know, i- is this a situation like that? And the worst thing in the world that can happen is people, you know, save money for their retirement one day and then, then the benefits that are promised to them don't happen. And, and that has happened many times in our country's history. And so, I just, you know, would encourage the PERS board and everyone else to seriously take a look at this and, you know, don't promise a benefit to people in the future that you can't deliver.
Right.
You know, and, and if you're having to keep passing on the cost to this, to the employers, you know, maybe it's time to sit down with a blank sheet of paper and take a new look at some other, you know, some other, uh, ways to achieve the, you know, the retirement goals for your employees, but. Okay, enough about that. The woman, that's all I have this evening. Uh, let's move on to our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve the personnel docket as presented on the stage.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hughes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update.
So, a couple of items that have come up. Uh, first is, this has already been approved by the board, but just entered into the minutes tonight. It was the, um, point-of-sale contract for the amphitheater that was approved the December, at the first meeting in December, um, with First Dad and Merchant Services. That's been signed and, um, and agreed to and executed. So, no action because it's already been approved, just noting that's being entered into the minutes for tonight's meeting. Um, next, there's a couple of con, or a couple of items that have come up that, um, need approval for it to go to bid. Uh, the first, uh, we can do it all at one time if that's okay with, just for them all at once, if that's okay with everyone once you go to bid.
Sure.
Uh, stoplight at Rasco and, um, or the traffic signal at Rasco and, uh, Greenbrook, uh, is, needs to go, solicit for bids. Um, the generator maintenance, I mean, generator, um, and upkeep and maintenance and advertising for the, uh, uh, South Haven Police Department for renovations, uh, for the generator at the South Haven Police Department. And then finally, the neighborhood city parks, uh, the mayor mentioned earlier. We can go ahead and get advertising, authorization for advertising for bids for that too. So, there's no, uh, objection. We can get a motion for those to advertise all of them.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion for all of them by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion?
Those will all come back to you once the bids are in for a war.
If there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hughes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion, that motion carries.
And then one other, other item that came up this evening, um, just approval for, uh, a sole source purchase from SETCOM, um, for their wireless system for portable radios for the, um, South Haven Police Department in an amount of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents. Uh, they're the, uh, only entity, or sole source that has the no additional, no additional battery charging required along with their required customer service of fifty-five hours a week, um, that's required for our police department. And then the, um, uh, frequencies that they provide, um, SETCOM is the entity that provides these for the, um, wireless police motorcycle communication system in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents, sole source in accordance with HSCO thirty-one seven thirteen.
Shall move.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hughes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on the stage.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Alderman, uh, Payne, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hughes.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.